Good evening. Welcome to our September 7, 2021 City Council meeting. It is 7:02 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mason Okubu from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, and Mayor Protem Castellanos will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor, for this privilege. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Guardian and Keeper of your people, watch over the members of our City Council, protect them, grant them wisdom, and permit them to experience the joys of noble service to grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and those who serve. Promote all things for the good of the people of West Covina, and may your will be accomplished among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabataba.
Present.
Councilwoman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Castellanos.
Here.
Mayor Lopez Viado.
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to presentation. We have a recognition, but before we bring her up, we have two videos that we'd like to show. And then I'd like to invite Ms. Lorena Alvarez up to the front after these two videos are presented. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lorena, and this is my West Covina. My name is Lorena Alvarez, and I live in West Covina. I've lived here since out of high school. My husband has lived here since he was in high school. So we started our family here. We've started new traditions. We just love it here in our city. We have so many great places to visit in West Covina, but one of my favorites is Fort Hills. And this is one of my first stops in the morning. It's a family-run business. There's Cuban pastries. And Fort Hills is actually a new tradition for us because it just recently opened up here in West Covina. It's close to home, so we love riding our electric bikes here. It's great to just roll up and have our experience here with Fort Hills. You know, as soon as you walk in, there's so much to see. There's the cake section, there's the bakery, there's the coffee bar. One of our favorite drinks is the Dulce de Leche latte. We love it, it's really caramelly. And then we go over to the bakery, and we check out what Danish we want. But we always want to make sure we get our usual, which is the cheese roll. Because I'm such a foodie, I have to make sure to get some exercise in. So after Fort Hills, I usually go over to do some Pilates or some yoga. We're at Yoganers Studio at the Heights Plaza in West Covina. They have a lot of different types of classes. They have yoga, Pilates, sound baths. They even have yoga en español, and I can't wait to bring my mom to try that. As a mom, this is the perfect way to get some me-time. It's necessary to start off my day so that I could be in a zen place. Because they've been here over 10 years, they develop this great community. When you come there, you feel like you made friends here. You can come and connect with other moms or just other women. It's a great way to get that self-love, and it's a great way to continue my day. One of my favorite spots for lunch is Bun Street in the Lake Street area. It's good for a little lunch date. I like to come here with my husband, but we also like to come in groups. They have the best burgers, they're really delicious. They're definitely picture-worthy. They have all sorts of burgers. They have spicy ones, they have teriyaki, mac and cheese. They even have really good appetizers. We like to get these pizza fries. You get the best of both worlds. And not only does it look good, it tastes amazing. I'm a garlic lover, so I get this stinkin' bun, and it is so good. It has this garlic cheese that they make here in the house, all these flavors. We've never tried these nachos, but we're trying these nachos today, these nacho fries.
Every Monday is happy hour all day. I usually order the mango head, and my wife orders a cocktail. And the mango head will pair great with this really delicious teriyaki burger that has a sweet flavor, but it also has avocado.
It's a really good location here. You can go to the movies afterwards, and the movies are just right across the way. It's a good local place for us people in West Covina. We have a lot of parks here in West Covina, but this is our favorite one. We're here at Palm View Park, and if you're from West Covina, you know this as the airplane park. Obviously, there's a huge airplane back there. And this is one of the things that we love to do with our family. A lot of us take our local parks for granted, but we love to come here. The kids make new friends here, they see old friends. There's so much to do here, their play structures are pretty new, so there's a lot of really cool playthings to do here. They also have a huge open space, so the kids can run around. You can have a party here. This landmark with the airplane is so much fun to look at, so much fun to play on. It's great for pictures. Of course, we have local vendors that stop by as well. We have the ice cream truck that comes at least once or twice while we're here. They all come running once they hear that song. The kids love that, so it's really fun for us here. So another one of our favorite things to do together as a family is come to bolero. It's a great landmark here in West Covina. There's so much to do here, there's something for all of us. There's bowling, there's arcades, there's food, we can drink. There's such a cool atmosphere here, they always have music going on. We're competitive with each other, mom and dad versus, you know, the kids. We switch it up a bit. And they even have the best-kept secret here in West Covina. There's a barber shop here. So while we bowl, our kids can get their hair cut. It's like a vintage-type barber shop, so it's really cool to just go in there and even look at what they have. It's really fun. One of my favorite things about West Covina is our diversity. And as a foodie, it gives me endless options for food. We have Korean, we have Japanese. One of my favorite places is this little gem, Mr. Boil. It's Peruvian food. My favorite dish to order is the Lamo Salsado. It's a traditional Peruvian plate, and it comes with beef steaks, onion, french fries, rice. And I love adding the chimichanga sauce to get that garlic taste. You have to pair it with the traditional drinks, which are the Inca Cola and the Chicha. Everything is very flavorful. Be prepared to wait a while, there's long lines, it's always really full in here, but the food is definitely worth the wait. We're always looking for fun places to go for date nights. And I recently found out about this place called Axe Throwing. This place has a Renaissance feel, so it's literally a throwback to the Renaissance era. Everywhere you look, it's actually a cool place to take a picture. They have this awesome photo up that's behind me. And it's great because they talk you through it, they coach you so that you can hit that mark. It's a great place to come with friends, so we brought some friends along so that we can have some fun, relieve some stress. It's a great way to end your week.
Testing, testing. So here we have Ms. Alvarez and ABC Seven Localish explores the city of West Covina with ABC Seven Eyewitness Lorena Alvarez. She's a longtime resident of West Covina. The segment visited several city landmarks, hotspots, parks, eateries, and more. So it's nice for residents to see the amenities we have. Do you want to speak on it? I know she has shown twice on ABC. So it's really nice to have West Covina featured for other cities and everybody else to see our beautiful city, so go ahead.
Well, I'm a blogger, so I'd like to showcase what we have, like, all around SoCal, but I could not resist, you know, showing what we have here in West Covina. I feel like there's always something new happening. And definitely, our old place that we love to visit is Palm View Park. That's one of our favorites. I feel like there's always being, there's always upgrades. There's, you know, the ice cream, there's exercise for the adults, there's a playground for the kids. I just love that we have so many amenities in West Covina. I love that our kids get to enjoy the schools. Everything that we have here, we feel really proud of. And so we just feel really proud to be residents here and hope to create more memories here.
So we just wanted to say thank you again, and we do have a present, a certificate. So all these places that you saw, including the Axe Throwing, they all are now open for business. I know COVID shut a lot of these places down, but they are all open. We still have them in our city. So we'd like to just say thank you. And we actually have two certificates, one from the city of West Covina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paulina is gonna take a picture. And then we also have one from the California legislator, legislator from Blanca Rubio. She's the Assemblywoman, District 48, from the California State Legislature. There you go. And we also like to present ABC Seven. I know we have Frank Nielsen, but I believe it's for ABC Seven. So on behalf of ABC Seven, we'd like to say thank you so much for featuring West Covina. So here's one for ABC Seven. And we just wanted to say thank you again. And for everybody else, your blog is?
Alvarez Adventures.
Alvarez Adventures. So if anybody wants to see all her adventures that she goes through in different cities, in different areas of the SoCal, feel free to just watch her, and that video is also on there as well, right?
Yes.
So you can forward that, share that with everybody else in the city. So we'll go ahead and get these. And we wanted to say thank you again, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
The family supports you and all your things, right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, thank you.
The next presentation will be by Los Angeles County of the Assessor, Mr. Prang. He's the current County of Los Angeles Assessor and is here tonight to provide us with information pertaining to the assessor's office.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. Actually, it's a pleasure to be anywhere after a year and a half stuck in the House, but hopefully I can add a little excitement into your deliberations in a way that can only be delivered by the county property tax assessor. So, but I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's nice to see some friends, first time in a long time. I've been looking forward to the opportunity to join you this evening and hope that the information I provide will be useful to you and to your constituents. I understand that there's a tremendous amount of confusion surrounding my office among the general public, but I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to offer a little bit of information to explain my role. The most important thing, I always like to explain to people not only what I do, but I like to explain what I don't do. I don't collect taxes. There's another guy who does that. He has a very intuitive title, he's called the Tax Collector. But most people call me the Tax Assessor, which is incorrect. There's no such thing as a Tax Assessor. I don't do taxes, I do property evaluations. But all joking aside, the assessor is one of three elected officials in the county. The other two are much more known than me, and that's the District Attorney and the Sheriff. Probably a good thing that I'm a little more subtle these days. But I administer a department of about 1,300 employees who are located in six offices throughout the county and were the largest local property assessment agency in the United States responsible for valuing over 2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments, which this year were valued at $1.7 trillion. In many ways, the assessor's office is the most important local government agency because I always like to say that no other agency can do their job until I've done mine. And if I don't do my job well, if I don't do it thoroughly, then other agencies, like your city, are not going to be collecting all the property taxes that you're entitled to to provide those services for your constituents. We have a PowerPoint, as you can see on your screen, there's some information about the office. And one of the things about my office is that we have a symbiotic relationship with a couple other departments that also have a piece of the property tax chain. And that's primarily the Auditor Controller and the Treasurer Tax Collector. The way it works is my office receives a copy of the deed from the registrar or a building permit from cities like West Covina. We then determine the value of that property. The auditor tells you how much you owe, and the Tax Collector sends you your bill and collects the payments. The valuation of all county property is important because it does generate revenue for local governments, school districts, special districts, and for county government. The types of property which is taxable is obviously real property, buildings and land, but also we're responsible for assessing what's called business personal property, which includes furniture, equipment, and machinery in businesses. It also includes commercial and general aviation aircraft, mobile homes, boats, and, believe it or not, even racehorses. My primary responsibility is the production of the annual assessment role, which is essentially the inventory of all property in the county. And the role serves a couple of major functions. It's the basis for the property tax system. It's also important to a lot of folks, like city managers, who look at the assessment role in anticipation of property tax revenue and preparing their budgets. And it also serves as an important economic indicator, giving some insight as to the health of the real estate market. We closed the 2021 role on June 30, and I'm happy to report that property values in the county continue to grow despite the recession due to COVID. This year's assessment role is the 11th consecutive year of property value growth since the recession of 2008, and it will generate $17 billion in property taxes. The assessment role grew by almost $63 billion. It's a 3.7% increase over the previous year. Not as great as the previous year, which was 6%, but still, it reflects a relatively strong market despite the challenges of the pandemic. To give you an idea of what's going on here in West Covina, I've included a table which gives you an idea of property value growth percentages and parcel counts for both West Covina and the county as a whole. As you can see, property values grew about 2.9% in the city, which includes 24,000 homes, 500 apartments, and 1,058 commercial properties for a total value of $13.3 billion. That's the assessed value. The market value, as you can imagine, is considerably higher. So despite the recession, and it continues to accompany COVID, the market did okay in LA County. In West Covina, the median sales price for a single-family resident, not including condominiums, rose by 14.5% year-over-year in August. Median sales price of a single-family home here is $707,000. Prices rose dramatically county-wide over the past year as we witnessed a flood of buyers in a very competitive market. There's a lot of folks who are not selling their properties. Limited inventory and historically low mortgage rates were primary drivers of those costs. I've included another chart here that shows the median sales price of homes in West Covina as well as the county. You can see the median sales price in West Covina is slightly less than it is county-wide. County-wide always gets a little bit skewed because of Bel Air and Beverly Hills. On the other end of the spectrum, we did see some businesses that were hurt by the pandemic, especially office and retail space, as well as hospitality, that struggled to maintain operations because of the restrictions that were placed on them due to health and safety reasons. Our records indicate that the retail vacancy rate in West Covina market is at 5.9% and has been on the rise since the beginning of this year. That rate is anticipated to continue to increase, or at least in the near term, as retailers regain their footing from the impacts of the pandemic. The office market in the area has also, for West Covina, has also fared reasonably well, and the 7.2% vacancy rate is well below the 13.5% county average. Industrial and warehouse spaces were not really affected by the pandemic because a lot of businesses shifted to online shopping. They took advantage of a lot of the industrial space that was available. We also know that a lot of small businesses, particularly in cities like yours, were impacted negatively by COVID. Retail stores, restaurants, gyms saw dramatic declines in business. We have been proactively reviewing those businesses to see if property tax relief was warranted. We've already provided tax relief to over 47,000 small businesses countywide. In West Covina, we proactively reduced the personal property assessments of 456 businesses out of a total of 1,524 that paid business property taxes last year. This represents property tax reductions for about 30% of all business personal property assessments in the city, or about $1,500,000 in reductions. I want to change topics for a minute and talk about something that's been in the minds of a lot of folks since last fall, and that is Proposition 19. This was a measure that was passed by the voters. It amends Proposition 13 in two ways. It does two primary things. The first one, the thing that really sold the measure to the voters, was it allows a senior citizen at the age of 55 or older, the disabled or a victim of a natural disaster, to transfer their property tax base with them when they sell their home and buy a new one. It allows you to move anywhere in the state, to buy a home of any value, and to transfer that value up to three times. Those are incredibly expanded benefits from what existed under previous law. The second component, though, which is much more controversial, refers to the transfer of property between, within families, the parent-to-child transfer. And those benefits have been greatly rolled back. Right now, in order, so if you want to leave your property to your children, in some cases, your grandchildren, the only property that you can transfer to them with the existing tax base is your primary residence. Unlike the previous law, no other property now qualifies. So if you had purchased three rental homes, and you were going to give one each to your three children and hope that they could inherit that in the tax base, that's no longer the case as it was in the previous law. Only one child can inherit that tax base. Secondly, in order for them to inherit that tax base, they must make that home their primary residence within one year. Also, it places a limit on how much of the value of your home you can transfer to your children. Essentially, if the home is worth less than $1 million, they can inherit the property and the tax base, and there'll be no change. If the property's over $1 million, there will be a new blended tax rate based on the inherited amount and a market-based rent, so there would be an increase. There's been a lot of confusion over this. Perhaps you've gotten calls from constituents. This measure was put on the ballot very hastily. There's a lot of deficiencies in it. We're waiting for legislation to catch up that will help us administer it. But a lot of people are buying and selling right now. They're looking to us for direction, and we don't have any to offer because I'm not a policymaker, I'm an administrator. And if I don't have guidance from the legislature, I can't make those determinations. If you want more information about Prop 19, we dedicated a special page on our website with a lot of information to help you understand what we know at the state. The last thing I wanted to mention was something, well, I began my remarks telling you that I'm not the tax guy, I don't collect taxes. However, I do manage programs to help people save money on their property taxes. And there's programs for seniors, veterans, the disabled, nonprofits. The most important one I want to mention tonight, though, is the homeowner's exemption. Anybody who owns a home and lives there as their principal residence qualifies for the homeowner's exemption. It allows me to reduce your assessed value by $7,000 for tax purposes. It's not a huge savings, it's only $70 a year. But currently, we estimate about 1/3 of all property owners in LA County don't apply. And they don't apply primarily because they don't know about it. And as a result, there's about $30 million in annual savings that go unredeemed. In West Covina, we estimate that 34% of all homeowners who are eligible for the homeowner's exemption do not claim it. It's a one-time application. All you need to do is download it from our website, and you only have to do it once, and it'll stick with you as long as you own your home. This is something I'm hoping we could work on together with the city. Other cities have mailed out this homeowner's exemption to the addresses that we've provided. They put information in their newsletters, on their website. And I know that with a lot of seniors, people on fixed incomes, those who are unemployed, while the savings are not a lot, I think during difficult economic times, any savings is helpful. So that pretty much wraps up my update. I hope I didn't go on too long, but I appreciate your taking a minute to listen to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, that was great, and that was actually perfect. Thank you very much for the information. And yes, we'd like our city to send out that last information for all our residents to save on their property taxes as well. Do Council have any questions?
I have a quick question. Do you have a hotline for people to call in to inquire some of the questions? But thank you so much for extremely informative information. But, okay, but this is so complicated for people, for example, senior, the property, and they add their kid's name, are they going to increase value? So they have a lot of questions. So when do they have a hotline so people can call you?
The number is 213-974-3211. And those are all, all those questions?
Can you repeat again, 213? So this is a hotline?
That is the, that's the, yes, that's the number that the public can call in.
Will they be busy all the time? Will they be busy all the time?
Well, there's the number up there, that's my office number. That'll, somebody will always answer that.
All the time, like, everybody calling you, trying to get information, so?
I'm a public servant, I'm happy to take calls.
I understand, but if you have numerous people wanting to call you, okay, so this is available for people?
Those numbers are both good. Go get somebody.
Does your office also assist those who have a hard time applying online? Is this an online application, or is?
It's a very easy application, it's just your name, your address, and a signature. So it's not, nothing complicated to that form at all. And we will, we do have people available to help if they need it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, okay, so another thing is, okay, and the property value went up so much, okay? And I know compared with the median home price, like, $700,000 in West Covina, this is really, really shocking, okay? So I remember I moved in, my purchase, my home is $180,000.
People in West Covina made a lot of money in equity over the course of the last year. It's important to note, though, just because your property value goes up does not mean your taxes go up, they don't.
True. You depend on the, because of Prop 13, okay? So in that way, you base on, so a lot of people, they're still living over there, so they still pay their base based on what they purchase. But every year, they go up about 3% or some?
This year it went up 1%.
1% only, right? So that's why, okay, people doesn't want to move due to they have a retax. Okay, much more affordable if they go to $700,000. Basically, they have to pay $7,000, $9,000 of property tax.
But if you moved to Iowa, you could get a really nice house.
No, no, we want to stay in West Covina. We want people moving out.
Why would you want to leave West Covina, though, I hear?
Correct, okay, we won't be here. But thank you so much, okay? And we have the hotline, hopefully it won't be busy all the time. And maybe you have email to our city, so maybe we can have the presentation going to our city website to link, so we can have this very informative information. At the end, I want to say thank you. And by the way, 2019, when I become a mayor, you show up, and now I saw you, you like losing 45 pound?
I was getting a little bit big around the middle.
Unbelievable, but thank you so much.
Take advantage of COVID, lose some weight.
Maybe you can email me how you, okay, okay, all those?
Don't eat food.
Huh?
Don't eat food.
Only food, that's a tough one. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Anybody else have a question?
I had a last question. If somebody resided there for many years and their tax base is low, but they decided to do a full-on remodeling, does they, do they assess the tax base on, like?
It's like everything else in government. The operative word is "it depends." So if you were doing, if you're remodeling your home, you're remodeling a kitchen or a bathroom, replacing the roof, but essentially replacing what's there, that's typically not reassessable. But if you start moving walls, adding square footage, and doing construction that might be valued, considered to be like new, that could result in a reassessment. But the general rule is adding square footage will change your assessment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, no other questions? Well, we thank you for your time, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time and attention.
We'll be bringing this out to the public, thank you. So we will now move to oral communications. If anybody would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and then submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have 10, Mayor.
10, okay. We'd like to first adjourn, we first like to make an adjournment before we continue on. The city, oh no, actually, no, we can go ahead. Before we continue, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. The city of Azusa announced that their flags at all city facilities will be lowered in honor of Mayor Protem Uriel Macias. Macias was in his fourth term on the City Council after first being elected in 2007. Mayor Robert Gonzalez said Macias served his country in the war in Afghanistan as a lieutenant in the US Navy. As a man, he was very detailed and focused on things that he wanted to accomplish. Gonzalez said he served our country and was a public servant and did a lot of good things for the community. In February 2014, Uriel Macias returned from an eight-month deployment in Afghanistan where he augmented Army and Marine Corps troops as part of Operation Enduring Freedom. Uriel Macias is survived by his wife Angela and their four children. This is such a loss for the community of Azusa, and we mourn with them. Thank you. City Manager, go ahead, I'm sorry. The Assistant Oral Communication.
Through the Chair Mayor, our first speaker is Julissa.
Through the Chair Mayor, our first speaker is Julissa Zapata, followed by Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of West Covina. My name is Julissa Zapata, and I'm here on behalf of State Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, representing the 48th Assembly District. I'm here to inform the City of State COVID-19 Relief, of a State COVID-19 Relief Program, as well as an event the Assemblywoman will be hosting here in West Covina. As many of you may know, the State Eviction Moratorium has been extended till September 30th, 2021. To support residents during these difficult times, the State is offering rent and utility relief payments for those who are experiencing financial hardship dating back to April 1st of 2020. This program is available for both landlords and tenants, and it's encouraged that both work together to apply. In, in that way, it'll ensure a very smooth application process. I have a few flyers here that explain the application process and a few of my business cards, so that if any questions arise about the program, I can put you in contact with the case manager who specializes on this program. You can also visit housing.ca.gov for more information and how to apply. Next, I would like to make the community aware of an event taking place at the Cortez Park Senior and Community Center on Saturday, October 2nd, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. In partnership with the City of West Covina, Local American Job Centers of California, and the Los Angeles County Workforce Development, the Assemblywoman will be hosting a Career and Resource Fair. This event will connect constituents with employment opportunities and educational pathways throughout the San Gabriel Valley. As we continue to recover from the pandemic, this is a great time for our constituents to explore employment opportunities and educational degrees and certifications in many career paths. Residents will have access to workforce development services, resume building, and interview tips onsite. You can RSVP on our website at a48.asmdc.org, or by calling our office at 626-960-4457. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share these vital services with the residents of West Covina, and feel free to reach out if I can be of any assistance. Thank you, and I'll leave my business cards right here with the flyers.
Can we have your information to the city so we can have people linked, so we can?
Definitely.
Lot of case?
Yes, I have a couple electronic flyers, I believe I sent you guys some, but I'll go ahead and send it over, that way we can throw it on the city website as well.
And if there's a few flyers, and, there's a few flyers?
Yes.
I guess we could place it up there, so if anybody in here would like to take one on their way out, they can just get that and gather and share that information.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, and we can give the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by R. Robinson.
I'm going to submit these papers for the record. Yeah. Yeah, these ones right here. So September 14th is coming right around the corner. You all voted yes, I know you did, and if you didn't, you can still be stupid not to. When I talk about stupid, because we have some idiot running California. And that idiot happens to be Gavin Newsom. Gavin Newsom's a real idiot because he's allowed particular businesses, mom-and-pop businesses like in West Covina, to lose their business. Isn't that great? And now the jackass comes out in all these commercials, and like a jackass, wants to make you believe with that pretty smile, like you woo, believe that what he's saying is true. Now, do you believe that kind of garbage? I mean, I prefer Larry Elder, let me clarify that, Larry A. Elder, because Larry Elder can speak his mind, kind of like what I do at times, to irritate some of you, and to stir you up, like that time when Mr. Wu's friend, Georgie, the guy, the big guy that followed me in his Corvette, and tried to bring some harm to me. But let me get into the claim for relief. I hope you're listening, Blanca Rubio. Your staff said what she said, but I find it hard to believe that you're trying to help your constituents. And what about that of Lisa Calderon, when I called Sacramento for the last two weeks? Where's the $600 that California owes us? Every resident here wants to know, where's our $600? It's a package that Gavin Newsom found money to return back to us. But again, on Item 4, which has been off the agenda for tonight, is general public commentary, Mr. Jeff Prang, Prop Number 19. Only for a home in California, 707 between 857, is an increase. But for who? For an asshole like me that actually owns a home, or some other asshole in here who's going to lose your home. So don't be idiots. Think about what you're doing to the people that live on the sidewalks and the streets, because it's those idiots that make our community look bad and feel bad. And because of Exhibit B on 12207 regarding the approval of central inventory, those 84.27 acres, really, really think about it. I don't care how bad that ground is, I don't care how many chemicals are there, I don't give a hell. Gavin Newsom, what's in that ground? Build in the name of homelessness. Build as high as you want, build as wide as you want, 84.2 acres, Blanca Rubio, you dumbass senator, where are you? To help the people, the residents asleep on the sidewalk and streets after you heard and read that that dumb, big, fat president, Nury Martinez from Los Angeles, who wants to be a mayor, simply said, remove their belongings and put them in the trash with that Joey the Bucket shit from where? CD-15, who wants to become the mayor of Los Angeles? All these hypocrites want to take control of our community and just create more havoc. Not for all of us, but for all of them who can't afford a home. So, former chamber building, an area with CNG, and this is regarding BKK landfill, Mr. Wu, instead of putting your head down because you know what the hell I'm talking about, coward, you're a coward. Look me in the face because you know what you did behind closed doors and all those private meetings with those pay-to-play developers. Fuck you, that's our land, no, no, no.
Language.
Do you hold on, lady? Don't interrupt my public comment. You're in violation of the First, the Fifth, the Fourteenth Amendment, Article Section 2 of the California Constitution regarding enforcement of unconstitutional rules. So if you don't like my criticism, cover your ears, stand up, and leave. But you know what I'm talking about, the developers that are taking the money, that you, offering you that money?
Time.
You're stealing that goddamn money.
Time next.
And you're making it hard for people to live and survive on the sidewalk and streets.
That's your time, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Greenspan, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Elsie Messman.
Mike Greenspan, and yes, I voted, and yes, I voted to get rid of that dickhead governor. Now, we need, there's a couple things I wanted to go over. One is Item 5, a temporary fire station, to be about two years. I hope in that time, you convince the community to actually get out there and build a replacement fire station, not temporary, but a brick-and-mortar type replacement. There's nothing wrong with having five fire stations in a town. Now, I don't know if your fire department is a Class 1. Los Angeles has a Class 1 fire department. Years ago, I umpired a game with someone who was a firefighter back in 2001, and he said they lost their Class 1 fire status for six months under Mayor Riordan. But it's very good to have a Class 1, because your fire insurance premiums go down. You end up closing one of those five fire stations because you dilly-dally for a couple years, and you're, and then they remove all the temporary stuff, your premiums are going to go up. You want to continue to work, if you don't have a Class 1 fire department, to actually have one. They're very good to have, especially the people who pay for it. In fact, there, there was a city in Tennessee called South Fulton, and they made the news. You have the option of paying your fire tax. Well, there was a fire, and the house that happened to have the fire did not have, they didn't pay. And the firefighters watched, because each of the houses on the other side were covered. So if it was going to spread over there, then they would do something to protect it. But while it burned, it burned. Sometimes government has to protect the people from themselves. It's not an option of whether you pay your assessment for the fire stations or not. But I guess the hayseeds in Tennessee don't know any better. In Florida, we don't have options, we pay for it, and they come out and they service all the houses, because everybody pays. Now, I mentioned about the Board of Supervisors having a cluster, and I erroneously gave an access number. I found that out, my source was Ivan from Supervisor Han's office that gave me the wrong information. I ended up calling 1-213-974-4111. That's the downtown number for Hilda Salisa's office. They gave me the proper access number. It's, it's an unknown thing of government, they don't have committees, they have clusters, it's a deputy from each supervisor. But they go, exchange a lot of information. It's probably best accessible through some kind of device, because when I did get to the phone call-in, they talked about something on people's screens. Now, some of this stuff used to be accessible when the county was still open, but I guess those are days gone by. It's sad. I'm grateful you guys have the council open, and I'm grateful to the other cities that have the council open. I think a lot of this coronavirus has been an excuse for secret government. And secret government belongs in other parts of the world, China, Cuba, Venezuela, places like that. We don't need secret government here. Secret government raises suspicion in everything else. After all, we had Mr. Prang speak from the assessor's office. He replaced somebody who was taking bribes, and I think might be in prison now. That's how Mr. Prang got, got to it. Of course, the voters voted for him, but his predecessor went down, what can I say, government corruption. But that's money that, that they assess to get you money for your services. So that was cheating us, the people. Well, I just wanted to let you know, so you can try to go to some of those clusters, as they call them at the Board of Supervisors, and maybe you can learn, learn something. They're probably more informative than the Board of Supervisors, and I think these deputies are the ones that feed into the Board of Supervisors. The homeless cluster is at 2 o'clock on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. When I get a chance, I'm going to call Hilda Salisa, because she's been the most cooperative in the office, even if she might be a bitch, and they've been cooperative. Thank you.
Our next speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Sharon Anderson.
Good evening, Council. Bill Robinson, resident. Please vote no on tonight's Resolution 92. Where's the emergency? I can't find it. State law in most states says that 90 days is the length of an emergency, not 19 months. There is no need to continue the state of emergency that commenced on March 16th, 2020. Council, please go back to doing your jobs as our local legislative body, instead of bringing your rubber stamps to ratify the city manager's monthly consent calendar. We collectively must wake up, stand up, and just say no to the medical and fascist tyranny now being imposed by the Big Pharma aristocracy, possibly again locking down 100% of the population of California this winter for an illness with a 99% survival rate. Additionally, I urge the council to do a full EIR on the proposed land transactions on, on tonight's pulled item on the agenda. A negative deck just won't cover the many environmental and financial concerns embedded in these property transactions. The pandemic is long over. I expect we'll face, going forward, a normal flu season when cold weather hits after Thanksgiving. But expect an increase in double-vaxxed injuries rate, a steady influx of medium- and long-term vax-triggered health problems. But at least we are still free to make the "my body, my choice" decision, as against if we were, if, if we want to be the, take the 43rd booster shot and be victims possibly streaming into our county hospitals in the future. Note the current injury rate observed today in this, in the state of Israel, the most vaxxed people in the, on the planet, and you will see California's future this winter. You don't need the, the city or the state to be a neurotic recluse and a, and a vax cult member. Our compliance is the problem. The end of this process is the V-passport. The Golden State dodged a bullet already last week. The Assembly Bill 455, there was a gutted switch operation of a, of a transportation proposal. But the, but the legislature pulled back when it threatened to undermine the GOV's efforts to avoid being recalled. But the V-passport will certainly be reintroduced by the Democrats in Sacramento next year. This is guaranteed, and I suspect another county or state mandated lockdown. The governor has turned the Golden State into a virtually open-air prison. I believe the public health crisis has been mismanaged at all levels, federal, state, local. We don't need digital currency or a social credit system, which will be imposed by Uncle Gavin's ruling class, the top-tier corporate elites and oligarchs upon the bottom-tier, unmentioned slave class of California, people like me. Thousands of young, young Americans died on Omaha Beach so we can enjoy our constitutional freedoms. Without vaccine passports, medical fascism cannot be established. Martial law leveraged, leveraged over the, the people cannot be established, so, so, and therefore dictating the basic aspects of our lives. But all LA City and County employees and their 463,000 California employees are now under mandate, the LA City employees, the, the state employees, to receive the experimental jab or lose their job. I think the mayor's is one of the 463,000. If I have no power to say no to the experimental gene therapy, I'm not free. I become nothing but a Golden State slave. So don't bend, don't break, stay strong. Thousands of young Americans died on Omaha Beach so we can enjoy our constitutional freedoms without vaccine passports, medical fascism.
Time's up, thank you.
Cannot be established, and, and martial law over the people.
We have the next.
Our next speaker is Elsie Messman, followed by Sharon Anderson, followed by Vanessa Perez.
Anyway, if we don't overturn this thing, the freedoms that were fought for are going to go right down the tube.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, my name is Elsie Messman. Apparently, if you Google "be water wise" dot com, some of the water companies give discount if you put in artificial turf, but you have to have a yard that you watered to qualify. The tract that I live The tract that I live in has at least 20 yards which have artificial turf. Item number five. Now that we are spending all this money on a temporary fire station, why don't we just close the station and transfer the equipment and staff to another station and start building a regular fire station? Instead of wasting all this money, for what? I'm sure if we needed help, some other cities would be able to help us. It's time you started listening to other suggestions and from the residents. Let's pay off our bills first. Number eight. I can't believe the city has finally found Friendship Park. Now, we want to fix this park for almost $1 million. If I recall correctly, we were to put a restroom in Shadow Oak Park that was approved many, many years ago. It's a shame they put in a park on 26 acres and the play area for the children next to the center is so small when you have open space like we do, like it is right now. It's better that we have what we had, but compared to the other parks, it's garbage. But I must say, it was a good move for the election coming in the next year. Bathroom for the senior citizens, playground for Shadow Oak, and now Friendship Park. We may not be good-looking, but we're not stupid. Now for the transparency. In this city, nobody wants to listen to new ideas, and this reminds me of Washington, D.C. There are residents who tell me that this is the worst city council in West Covina has ever had. They don't come to the meetings. They just watch it on TV. They said, "There's no point in coming to the meetings. You never listen to you anyway." When the council members thought they should, when a council member thought we should be ranked 120 instead of 12, shows he really still has his head in the sand. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Anderson, followed by Vanessa Perez, followed by Jim Grivitch.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here again because of the application for the taxes that you guys want me to pay, our business. I wasn't able to stay here for the whole entire time last time, and I came back only because I watched a little bit of it. And when the gentleman here said that, "Well, I'll check into it," it was like a flippant, "I'll check into it." I had all the paperwork in a row stating from the 2012 that you guys looked, the other city council looked into all of the business licenses. They looked into it 2012, 2013, and 2014. You decided not to do it, and it was off. To me, he should have said, "I'm going to call this HDL." Is it HDL? Okay. Management company and tell them to stop sending out this until I check into it. Because I'm sure people have already signed up for it. They've probably maybe paid because they can only go back three years. And the guy said that they were going to charge them three years prior if you had this for the business license. They'll never see that again. And you guys know that, that they should get that back. I did not like the response for that. I presented it. It is in black and white. It is in all the notes for the meetings before. It should have been done the next day and called HDL and said, "Cease and desist that order." Okay, enough on the soapbox on that. One more thing, maybe two. I don't know. Okay, that "go West Covina," I am livid over that. I texted the thing in for, in 621 of a city tree down in the front yard.
Go request, right?
Yeah, yeah, the app, yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm not computer literate or anything, whatever. It's "go request" or whatever that the city provides, which at times has been very nice. But this one, 621, there was a big tree branch down in the front yard, and it is a city tree. It's still there today. The owner has tried it three times. I tried it twice. I've called them. Well, I called him a week later. Well, we're really busy. We'll get to it when we can. And that was 628 that I called, or right around. Because it was a week later that I called. Now, that's ridiculous. I mean, this branch is huge in this front yard. And not only that, but the tree is rotted. And I told the guys, I said, "You, you know, put down every time you called or do everything." I said, "Because if this tree falls down, city's liable." And there is cars parked. Right, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's 1538 East Larkwood. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I'm telling you, it's huge. I just had one of my branches fall down, but it's my tree. And I had that cleaned up within less than a week, you know, because I love my trees. Another thing is, the code enforcement has to get out there and start writing people up for putting trash out. On that same street at the end next to that one house, there's trash all over, over there in the 1200 block of Larkwood. There's a guy that's had his car parked in the driveway for four years. And I know code enforcement has tried and tried and tried to get out there and work with him. I'm sorry, after four years, you should be tired of working with him. Do something about it. Get that damn car out. Because I've actually seen rats come out from underneath that car. One of them chased me, that's why I know. That was not a pretty sight. But please, let's beautify, you know, West Covina. We need it. I've been a resident here for 66 years, and I want to stay here, maybe for another two years, and go to Idaho, not Iowa, Idaho.
Stay West Covina, don't.
No, no, no. My time's up here.
Thank you. The city manager will address everything.
Don't be able to get more taxes.
Just make sure we have your, you left your information.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure they got it.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Vanessa Perez, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by Françoise. Françoise, Françoise, Françoise.
Hi. My name is Vanessa Perez, and I'm the parent of Joseph Perez. He was brutally beaten by several members of the industry sheriffs stationed on July 27, 2020. Then charged with numerous counts of resisting arrest and assault on a peace officer with GBI, as well as a violation of probation. These sheriffs not only used excessive force, but left him to almost die on the sidewalk for over 45 minutes before providing any medical attention. Sorry. Then falls off by documents and placed items that did not belong to him in his property. Joseph suffered from 17 staples to his head with no anesthesia, 19 stitches to his face and his ears, skin adhesive to parts of his scalp and face, and three staples to his leg due to a puncture wound, possible taser, concussion, multiple facial fractures, nerve damage. It has almost been a year now, and my son has been forced to heal in jail for over 1,000 days' credit in jail. His court dates keep getting postponed while these sheriffs are still working on the field, and no discipline has been enforced. In fact, two of the deputies, Sebastian Pombal and Adam Nelson, shot a man in the face just 10 days after they disfigured my son. So in fact, I know there is no disciplinary action. West Covina Courts were willing to release him if he took a plea on July 1, 2021. But my son was a no-show. And then they rescheduled for July 16, and he doesn't make it on that date either. West Covina Courts said he refused, which was a lie. The previous attorney said the sheriffs are messing with my son, not letting him go to court. And he said he'd be extracted out of his cell, which means they beat the shit out of him. Those are his exact words. Since being declassified 5/20/21, Joseph has encountered issues from skin mites in the Los Angeles County Jail, and now is causing problems with inmates. He's been denied proper medical care, and I just can't comprehend why the courts have not dismissed or dropped these charges and why my son's still in jail for over 1,000 days to heal with all these injuries in jail. Okay, I'm writing you this letter in hopes that your office will see fit to release my son and dismiss these charges and time serve for the probation violation and then investigate the city of industry sheriffs and as well as the West Covina court system. I believe there's inside workers that are intentionally look for victims, vulnerable victims like myself, mothers, wives, and intentionally delay court dates and tamper and destroy with evidence, with documents, any evidence with documents. All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Sorry to hear about that.
Our next speaker is Jim Grivitch, followed by Françoise, followed by Gloria Gander.
Good evening. I'm asking her to distribute a document that I wish to talk to tonight. First, I'd like to thank Jerry Potras for preparing this chart. It's also part of the West Covina Neighbors website. I'm trying to act as a consultant to the council to try to explain exactly why I get up here frequently and say the city's in financial trouble. Because I've heard from some of the council disbelief, and that's a very serious concern to me because it isn't just me doing this. It's the state auditor, and it's not something that we made up for political reasons. It's cold, hard numbers. The city's rank in the last four years has fluctuated a bit in terms of cities. But one thing that's stayed remarkably stable over the last four years is what the state auditor calls the fiscal health score. It's basically been in the low 40s all four years, which basically means your fiscal health hasn't changed. And that's really unusual. Most cities go up, change, or go down. It doesn't matter who the city council was. It doesn't matter who the city manager was. The situation hasn't been changing. And so tonight, I'm going to try to explain why that is so. The reason you have a high-risk ranking is because of essentially pensions. The city has extremely high pension costs. You have almost twice as many pension employees on pension than you have working. That ratio essentially has caused the whole financial crisis that you are in, whether you accept it or not. And it can't be fixed by just saying we're going to be a little more optimistic about our revenue next year, which was said at the last meeting. The real problem is the city used to have a lot more employees than it has now, about 40% more, actually. Those people have all retired, and you're having to pay for their pensions. The city has had a practice for many years of hiring police and fire who have already worked for another city for like 10, 15 years because they preferred transfers. They didn't want to hire new people. Well, there was a serious problem with that with respect to pensions. They only work for you for 10 or 15 years, and now they're on retirement, and they'll be on retirement for 25 years. That means you're paying, in effect, double cost. They only work for you half. They get a full retirement and paid for by you. Fortunately, recently, the city seems to have started changing that practice, and I hope they continue it because there's no solution that continues that practice. There is only a serious continuation of the deterioration of your financials. Let me say it a different way. We all would like more police on the street. I would like more police on the street. But instead of paying for police on the street, we're paying for police to be retired. That's essentially where the money's going. That's why we can't hire more to be on the street. And all I've really been asking for all this time is the city be prudent with respect to deficit spending. And all I asked for at the last meeting was that the city council, ask the city manager to present a plan to the city council that would ensure that the city doesn't deficit spend again this year because it looks like it's going to. And I do want to make one comment about revenue. I actually agree with the city council members' statement last week that our finance director underestimated revenue. My guess is 2.5 million or so, mostly property taxes. But unfortunately, the budget also underestimated expenses because the fire department always overdrafts by $1 million to $2 million. And the litigation is always overdrafting by $1 million to $2 million. So even though the revenue's understated, so is the expense. So we're not really gaining around there. That's it.
Our next speaker is Françoise, followed by Gloria Gander, followed by JD.
Hello, everybody. I hope everyone's well. My name's Françoise Colton. I'm a West Covina resident. I am a homeowner. And I'm basically, I'm here today. Of course, we all know the pandemic's still going on. It's just, there just doesn't seem to be any end in sight. The Delta variant is affecting people who are not vaccinated, and it's just a really sad, difficult time for most of us. Many have died. Businesses are having still difficulty finding people that want to work. People are afraid to work. Or, you know, it's just crazy, crazy times. So in addition, many individuals and families have not been able to recover from loss of jobs and income and loss of family, which also equates to loss of income in some cases. Yet the eviction moratorium will end at the end of the month, which is really sad. So I'm here, you know, as a homeowner, I'm here today to share information with residents who are renting an apartment or a house from a landlord. You know, they do have rights. A lot of times, they don't know what those rights are. They don't know how to get the information, or they can't read the information. They can't, they don't have the time because we all work. So many people work paycheck to paycheck. They don't know what's going on. That's something that's become an issue in this country, generally speaking. People don't know what's happening. So anyway, so I'm here. You know, me and several other people, we created a West Covina Tenants Union this summer. And we're affiliated with a larger tenants alliance called the San Gabriel Valley Tenants Alliance. And we have different organizations that have sprouted up from that in different cities in San Gabriel Valley. So now we've created one in West Covina, and our goal is basically to keep residents housed. You know, housing is a right for everyone. And so we created this group, and we can help renters navigate online systems, help them to learn how to apply for monetary assistance as it relates to rent and utilities. A lot of people don't know about this, that housing is key. There's a lot of information there. So we can provide other resources as well and referrals. And we have a monthly Zoom meeting. We also have this Thursday, a Know Your Rights meeting, a Zoom meeting, this Thursday, September 9 at 7:00 p.m. And we want to empower our residents. We want them to know about this. Because again, the moratorium, I don't think it's going to be extended. You know, the Supreme Court said it was unconstitutional, which, you know, I disagree with. But regardless, that's what's happening. So, you know, we can't allow for many more people to become homeless. There's a huge possibility that will happen in this country. And, you know, even though I'm a homeowner, I can't just sit idly by and let this happen. So we have a website. It's westcovinatenantsunion.org. We encourage everybody to go there. Again, it's West Covina. People can register for it, and I'm hoping that the city council will also support this, this effort. You know, we just can't do nothing. You have to do something about it. And there's actually, there may be another event, I know I've talked to people in the city, but there may be another event that'll take place with music, free music, on the 24th of September, and we want to basically invite people to come out to the Cortez Park and Senior Center to hear some free music, have some speakers talk about what people can do, because again, it's just a muddled maze to figure out, you know, how to get money from the state, from the county, federal, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, that's why I'm here today, West Covina Tenants Union, for all of you watching, and, you know, good luck to everybody, and stay healthy, and have a good day.
Gloria Gander, followed by JD.
I wanted to introduce myself to you, as I would if I had been interviewed, because I applied for the audit position for the committee, and I wanted to let you know what my background is. I retired from the Internal Revenue Service, I have experience as a revenue agent, which means I audited corporate returns, and presently, I am a president of a timeshare owners association. As a president, or as a member of the board, you are required to analyze the financial statements that the management company prepares every month. In addition, you also analyze the CPA audited report, and we participate in the budgeting of the association. We do this every year. So I think that I am pretty well qualified to be on the audit committee. If you have any doubt, I have worked a long time for the IRS, and prior to that, I worked for the General and County Office, and I did not do financial audits, then I did operational audits, which means that you look at what agency is supposed to do, and you determine whether or not they accomplish their goals. So I've had a lot of different experiences, and I just wanted to say hi to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. JD.
Good evening. Welcome back, council, to the people's house. I just have three questions tonight. The first one is regarding the IOU the manager, city manager promised you, mayor, regarding the credit cards, wondering whether he paid on that IOU, and if you were willing to share with us, the number of credit cards, whom they've been issued to, et cetera. The second one has to do with the, this tax, I call it a tax, you might call it a fee or something else, but I call it a tax for homeowners that ran out their third, second, third home. I was wondering when that will be put on the agenda? That is a work in progress for those that have already been fined. So it's really important that you shed some light on this issue, so we can disinfect the ambiguities and the doubts that exist. My third question has to do with the town hall budget meeting, second one, that I attended. This question came to me in a form of a question. I advocated for more police, someone else advocated to help the small business in West Covina with some of the American Recovery Funds. And the question that was posed to me by the city manager was, after stating that what he was trying to do was put in place a budget that was in keeping with the city's ability to pay, and that sounded good. And then he posed a question to me, he said, JD, where would you have me cut in operational expenses, or in the general fund, or go into? My response is not important, but the inference that I walked away with was that we couldn't afford it. Now let's leap to a month later. I saw from this council a wish list. I think you add for police officers, mayor, 20 police officer, was that you, Dario? Code enforcers, 10, I don't know what number, as Diaz, you want to reinstate all of the maintenance workers, but no one bothered to ask how we were going to pay for this. So I'm a little concerned as to how a city manager in a town hall budget meeting, at least to my understanding, confessed, hey, you know what, we can't afford to just load up the city with cops, we can't afford it. We can't afford more cops. He said he recognized the need on a certain incident, but couldn't afford it. That's what he implied, at least that's how I inferred it. You folks turned around and asked for this wish list, and I thought it was going to be, you know, just something that would be further discussed and explored as to how you're going to go about paying it. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear it, I didn't hear it. So I'm not, I'm feeling a little empty as to the answer I received at that town hall meeting juxtaposed to how this council went about amending the budget. If I can get an answer tonight, I'm going to sit here and wait, I will greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, mayor.
On to the city manager, may you please respond to the public comments concerns?
Good evening, mayor and council, and members of the public. I'd like to try and briefly respond to a number of the comments that were made tonight, especially the questions. First, to thank the Office of State, Senator Blanco-Rubio, and the manager's report a little later, I'm going to highlight the job fair that they're going to be cosponsoring with this at the Senior Center in short order. Couple of our speakers spoke in favor of the recall, I'll have information to share with you about how people choosing to vote in that election can do so at city facilities. Mike Greenspan asked about whether West Covina is a Class 1 department. No, we are not, although we have, as I believe everyone is aware, been spending an awful lot of time and effort quantifying the physical shortcomings of the department, both in terms of the buildings and the rolling stock. There's an item on your agenda tonight, we're recommending temporary crew quarters for Fire Station 1 while we figure out a permanent arrangement, but in the short term, that building has been allowed to run until it has now failed, and we need to move our firefighters out of that, those conditions are not acceptable. Elsie Messman also asked about the fire station, be happy to talk to her or any member of the public at any time about those condition reports. Actually, the most thorough one pertained to Fire Station 1 from the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and there were myriad of problems in there, asbestos, and exiting, and electrical, and roofing, and structural cracks. We are in conversation with our employees, our firefighter association agrees completely that we're past time to move out, and so tonight, we're recommending that the council authorize temporary crew quarters, and then we'll be intending to house the rolling stock, the equipment, within the former city shop building, the metal building behind. Speaker Sharon Anderson asked about business license at the last meeting, she asked that the city look into that business license as it would apply to single-family residences, those businesses. I did indeed ask our business license provider, HDL, to stop collecting it while I researched that question and some of those legal questions with the city attorney, so that's been suspended. And I've taken note about the tree branch at 1538 East Lockwood, I'll tend to that one, and also the abandoned vehicle complaint. One speaker spoke with some questions about the incarceration of her family member by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. That is not our jurisdiction, but I do know a number of members of that department, and will forward her concerns to responsible parties within that department, so that they might take a look at those questions and respond to her directly. Mr. Grivitch, Grivitch talked about the city's budget and the state auditor's list of high-risk cities. We came quite close this year, within, I believe, a point or two of becoming not a high-risk city, but a medium-risk city, and Mr. Grivitch is correct that most of the city's reason for being on that high-risk list relate to pension, pension obligation, pension costs, the funding of our pension obligations. I would just note, for everyone's sake, that we have been bargaining with our employee unions about their contributions to those pensions. This last year, we have publicly agreed with our police officers association, and they're paying now in additional 3% toward their own pension, which I thought was quite significant on their part, and hopefully will help us get off that high-risk list, if we're able to do that with all the unions in aggregate. Francois Colton, thank you for sharing the information about the Tenants Alliance, and I'll have a staff member listen in to the Zoom meeting on Thursday. Ms. Gandora is one of four applicants for three seats on the audit committee, the council will decide about that later tonight, so we'll see who you choose among your applicants. It's nice that we had more applicants than seats, it's a good problem to have, but that'll happen later this evening. JD, I still, I've got the work almost completed on the roster of the city credit cards and that, that process, there's not been any findings in that area so far, but I still owe the city council that final report. You also raised about the business licenses, as mentioned just a moment ago, I have asked our vendor, HDL, to stop collecting it while that's being researched. And regarding more police, at budget time, the staff presented a budget, which was a proposal, council acted upon it and adopted a budget, which increased staffing in several of those areas. That's the budget that's now bound and printed and published, and that's the budget we're following. I think that's all I've got this evening, I'm ready for the manager's report if you are. Oh, questions?
Through the chair. City manager, we've been asked a couple of times about the relief funds that we received, about why we, we don't share that with the businesses, or, you know, that's the commentary or the question, something to that effect. I don't think we've touched on that, but I'd like to respond, and if I'm inaccurate, please let me know. The reason for that is that the monies that we've received, and Elsie, you've asked this a few times, I think JD reiterated that this evening, is because the funds we've received are specific to cities, because for the residents and small businesses, they did receive significant, and I believe, much larger allocations of relief. For businesses, it was the PPP. For individual citizens, it was, you know, if they were unemployed, it was bonuses coming from the federal government on top of state EDD. So to answer those questions, there were allocations for everyone else other than cities, and they were larger. So is that accurate?
Through the chair, that is a very accurate description of the Recovery Act funds that the city received. That was considered, we had some good conversation around it at the budget town hall meetings, and I think one of the answers that I gave perhaps eloquently that night is, I'm your city manager, and with those funds to the extent I'm able, I'm trying to get us off of shortcomings in terms of things that are the city responsibility, items and programs that only the city can be responsible for, where we have significant deficiencies that could be eligible under those Recovery Act funds. So that was considered by, by the community and by the council when the budget was adopted, and you'll soon see those things come forward in the form of projects. One item that isn't purely a city program or project, a shortcoming like $3 million worth of radios, or deficiencies in the fire station, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, was the jobs training partnership that we're going to stand up with the Conservation Corps people. It helps with jobs and employment, it helps with jobs training, it helps a community-based organization achieve their mission concurrent with achieving one of the city's missions, which is trying to get our median's landscaped. But those items were considered by council and vetted and approved as part of the budget, and we're rolling forward with those. I'll show you a couple of them in the manager's report when we get to that in just a moment. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer as well.
On to your manager's report.
Okay, thank you. We could back up just to the first slide, there's one item I wanted to mention, just as an intergovernmental report. I know I've gotten some questions from members of the public about what's happening with the creation of the West Covina Municipal Health Department. That, by the way, is a term that we're not identifying ourselves as such until, unless and until the state stands us up and authorizes that. We are in regular communication with the California State Department of Public Health about the city's application to become a municipal health department. At our most recent meeting, they've got three high-ranking officials that are responsible for reviewing the city's application and intention. The indication from Dr. Chapman, who's the lead at the CDPH, is that very shortly intends to submit the city's application to the director's office. This is, this is a huge step in terms of this effort. From there, the city's application will go to CDPH Legal Services, which is within their Health and Human Services Agency. From there, it goes on to the Administrative Law Division. That's the agency that ensures that all of the CDPH regulations that get promulgated are clear, they're necessary, they're legally valid, and available to the public. The state is dual-tracking the application for the health department, and they're also concurrently processing emergency regulations with the intent to issue and promulgate. When those are issued, we'll be seeing them for the first time, as will members of the public, and there will be a defined period within which the state will welcome comments. And as further action steps are presented to us, I'll share at future meetings. Can I have the next slide? Wanted to make mention again of the vote centers that we've stood up, we've got two of them, one is at Cameron Park, and one is at Cortez Park. We've got drop box locations all around town, so people are eligible to vote by mail, they're eligible to drop off their ballots at these locations, and they can vote at the vote centers on Election Day, Tuesday, the 14th, which is fast approaching. I wanted to keep providing some brief updates about the energy project. This is a picture of the re-roof at Shadow Oak. A number of our roofs, we judge success and failure when it rains outside by the number of buckets we have to put inside on days when it rains. This is a tear-off of the old gravel roof system, installation of new jipboard, and new PVC roofing system with some new cap on the coping, but it's heartening to see these things, because as an energy saving measure, not only will it not leak, be impervious to water, it'll be a cool roof that'll help us cut down on energy costs, which is how we're paying for all these things. This highlights the rear, which is an area we normally don't get to see, the area, the parking lot behind Fire Station 4, Zeus at Fair Grove. It is a new structural section of concrete, which will accommodate the loading criteria and needs of our fire engines. They hold 700 gallons of water for a normal pumper engine, which it, you know, so much per gallon is a big load. The previous asphalt wasn't compacted, wasn't proper, and was completely at the end of its useful life, so it's really heartening to see this in place and in use. This next slide is a picture of leadership. This is our fire chief, who, I told you at the last meeting, the governor put out a call for us to send more resources, and we were extremely reluctant to do so, because we have to cover our own community and our own firehouses. But they also put out a call for fire management and fire leadership, so this is Fire Chief Capelli on the scene, he's leading a task force, he comes home tomorrow. The task force is four fire engines and a water tender from all over the western states, one from Nevada, one from Arizona, one from New Mexico. He's been working 18-hour shifts in the Myers area, which is very near South Lake Tahoe, and we're really proud of him, and proud that he's representing West Covina as the state is in crisis. Next slide. Wanted to highlight that the sportsplex is now open. We're He's been working 18-hour shifts in the Myers area, which is very near South Lake Tahoe, and we're really proud of him and proud that he's representing West Covina as the state is in crisis. Next slide. Wanted to highlight that the sportsplex is now open. We're taking bookings for tournaments, for friendly tournaments, for practice. Last weekend, the city council had a first-pitch ceremony to commemorate the facility's first tournament weekend. For rental information, you can visit the city's website. We're getting this up and getting it open, and it's really nice to see it in use. Groups that want to use those fields, we need to book them efficiently. If we can book three at once, you don't have to book all three, you're welcome to do so, but we're ready for use, and people are playing ball, so it's glad to see it. This is one of the issue areas that Elsie Messman raised, what's happening with Friendship Park. We've put together a package of funding relying primarily on federal community block grant funding. This is a million-dollar redo of the playground and fitness area. It's on your agenda tonight. If you approve, we anticipate the new playground will be up and in use by the end of the calendar year. So we're, hopefully, we get that vote this evening. This is a slide that just shows briefly how we've changed the look and the distribution of our weekly statistics for our police department activity. This is going out on all the social media platforms. It's a really great way to see how our officers are keeping our city safe. I'd also just like to highlight and make mention of the fact that our flock cameras have gone live. Our police department has been able to make several arrests for felony stolen vehicles and also for a critical incident in the community involving a hit-and-run. So these cameras are up, and they're working well, and it's proving to be a really valuable system. This next slide is maybe a little hard to see, but we've got a street pavement program that's coming out this year. We're going to be spending about $2.5 million. It'll probably be later this fall. The streets that we're focusing on this year are on the west side of the city, south of Cameron, and it's in accordance with our pavement management program. So I think a lot of people wonder how those streets get selected. There's a fair amount of engineering science that goes into it, and we're going to try and get that out before the end of the year, out to bid and under construction. I wanted to invite people to stay up to date on city services and programs and events. We've got these things listed on our website. People can follow us on our social media handles. We're going to work to bring back the Discover magazine. We currently have an RFP out to assist us with the dissemination of our city information. That's a concern that I hear expressed often in the community was, how do I find out? I didn't know if only I'd been told. And we need to get some more modern tools in place so that people can learn about all of our different programs and events. We've been continuing to work to get more Measure H funds. There's a grant application cycle, a notification of fund availability that's just gone out. We're going to work to get some more funding for services to supplement our existing programs to help with outreach in our hard-to-reach populations. We're going to try and get some funds, including matching funds for our crisis response program. We had a number of citizen requests about bulky item pickups. This is a program available through Athens, which seems to be working really well. People can put out to curb, they can make prior arrangements for the pickup, no restrictions on the number of pickups per year. As somebody who's been remodeling and fixing up his own house, I can tell you, this is a terrific program. If you can sign up ahead of time and tell them what's out there, they come get it. So you don't need to bring it anywhere. But just as a reminder, people can go online to the Athens website. We've got a link to it on the city's website. We are bringing back our employee awards program and a state-of-the-city dinner. If you could save the date, October 14th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., we're going to do it up at the sportsplex. And we want to recognize the good work of a number of our employees and talk about our city programs and projects. We hope people will find that interesting and are welcome to attend. Number of upcoming events to highlight, we're going to be doing some etching of catalytic converters. We're going to try and do 100 cars. We're hoping people can go on our website and sign up ahead of time. We think we're going to be at capacity on that one. We've got a couple heritage celebrations we're partnering with, the Hispanic Heritage Celebration at the Plaza West Covina, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on September 18th, the Filipino-American Heritage Month, noon to 4:30 p.m., also at the Plaza West Covina. I mentioned earlier, some of them were Blanca Rubio's Career Fair, Sunday, October 2nd, from 9:00 to noon. We, the city, are also going to be participating. We're finding it important for us to be out and get the word recruiting police officers and park maintenance workers and the like. And then lastly, a community event, a Halloween event on Saturday, the 31st, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Plaza West Covina. And that's all I've got this evening for reports. Thank you.
Quick question. The Halloween event at Plaza, I think last year was a disaster. Is that going to be the same as this year?
Madam Chair.
Paulina, to explain what we're doing.
No, last year, it was a drive-through event. This year, it's going to be within the mall, and we're going to have a maze, and it's going to be back to the structure that it was before the pandemic.
Just checking. Thank you. Other questions, correct? Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? And I know you're pulling one out.
Mayor, if I may have item four pulled off your agenda tonight, that one needs some more work, and I'll bring it back to your next meeting.
I'd like to pull Agenda Item Number Two.
Two, anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through eight, with the exception of two and four?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Mayor Protim Costelanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Onto item number two by Councilman Tabatabai.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the CSSC on May 11th made a recommendation, sorry, forgot, regarding cahoots. And given what the city manager just presented, the presentation we received from Captain Plunkett, and the work currently being done by the West Covina Homeless Initiative, CSSC's recommendation to play an active role in the SGB COGS research into cahoots and possible pilot program seems to be a very logical step in our fight against homelessness. So I'd like to move that we accept the commission's recommendation to engage in the COGS cahoots research, and that staff present to council the findings of the study when completed in December. So that's the motion.
Motion that, because this is passing this already, right? Because a consent passes this?
If I may, through the chair, try to answer the question. It's been the tradition here, when these committees come forward with their minutes, the council receives and files them publicly and then memorializes them publicly that this work is going on, so you're aware of it. I would recommend that you follow this council request process, which is a separate and parallel track. If you want the city to stand up a certain program, that you do that as what we try not to refer to as a mother may I.
Right.
That would be my advice to you as to how you do that. But regarding these minutes, you just receive and file by minute order, by motion.
Okay, sorry for the confusion, because I know when the traffic committee meets, their recommendations are, it doesn't say receive and file, it says.
The traffic committee is a, through the chair, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get in a dialogue, if I may. The traffic committee often has quite specific recommendations, like this curb gets painted red, these no parking signs get installed between here and here, and so those require council action. It's not been your tradition with respect to this body. So I would recommend that you treat that one differently and follow a council request process if you want to have them begin a program, the here or the cahoots or whatever it is.
So in regards to this agenda item, in regards to any information that is with this minute, if there's any questions or concerns about their minutes?
Okay. Yeah, so then can I, Madam Mayor, the question. So then, any commission that makes recommendations, then the proper way for council to then take those recommendations is to make a motion during council request based on the, so based on their recommendations, right? So, because otherwise, why do we have these committees, right, these commissions, right? Their job is to make recommendations, and then, so you're saying that is the proper protocol?
Through the chair, I would believe that to be correct, that if you want to initiate a program, have some special study, some new program begun or ended or evaluated or whatever, that you do that through the other process, which is typically at the end of your meeting.
That's, as I remember, because as a commissioner, with this, we would make recommendations, and then it would go, as the process is shown currently in regards to this.
That would help me, if you would.
But any questions or concerns to the minutes on the Community and Senior Service Commission meeting?
No.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there receive and file?
Receive and file.
All right, yeah.
The minutes.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Tabatabai, and a second by Mayor Protim Costelanos to receive and file, item number two. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Four's pulled out to a later time, so Department Regular Matters. Item number nine, consideration of appointment to Audit Committee. So I just wanted to thank all the applicants who submitted. Only a selected few can be appointed, but if not appointed, you know, we also like, there are some community members who do give recommendations and send us emails and so forth, so I hope to see that occur. That being said, council, any discussion or motion to be made in regards to this?
Yeah, I mean, for this, so we've got three open seats. I would like to make a recommendation, a motion for Lauren, David, and Miguel to be appointed as our Audit Committee members.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Costelanos, and a second by Councilwoman Diaz to appoint Lauren Ashley Castro, Miguel Garcia, and David Lynn to the Audit Committee. Councilmember Tabatabai? Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Onto Mayor Councilmember reports. Is there any reports to City Council request? Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like, I'd like to move that we accept the CSSC's recommendation, that we engage in the COGS cahoots research, and that the staff present to the council the findings of the study on cahoots when completed in December. Again, in order to become a pilot program, active engagement in the initial study is necessary.
I want to, okay, I think I was supposed, okay, but I want to, okay, do as a city manager report, to look into, okay, point come, okay, and bring the council to study and vote on approval, if this makes sense to us. So it's okay with you?
I was going to say, I would like to hear the presentation before we make an action that I might not agree on.
So, so I, okay, I was seconded, amended for, okay, to approve this, Madam AI, for the city to research about the program. I'm not quite understand the program and how the city to work and what is point come, and then bring to city to discuss, okay? And then we can base on the merit, okay, to approve or, okay, decline. So based on the report, okay, and the impartial report from both sides, and we see what's point come. So let's, I want to amend the motion for, okay, and approve the, Madam AI, for the city to bring the report back to the city council, to have all angle for the detail regarding the program and how the city, how the our community service department, okay, commissioner, okay, can work on this and help the city to, okay, do the homeless issue. Okay, thank you.
I agree. When you say cahoots, I think of the program that everybody, including the school, plays originally. That's the cahoots.
The K.
Yeah, would we know? But, yeah, exactly, I'd like to hear the presentation. Go ahead, Count, Mayor Protim.
I just want to agree. I was going to request more information. I just don't know enough about it yet, so, yeah, let's check it out, and it's, well, we'll get a presentation. It looks like the COG is also involved, so that we'll have some discussions there, too.
Anybody else?
I agree. I think that we should get some sort of a presentation so we could make a better decision and go forward from there.
He moves to a.
We have a second. Second.
So I have an amended motion by Councilman Wu to, Councilmember Tabatabai's original motion, to research the program and bring it back as a city manager's report at a future council date. Is that correct?
Agenda.
Agenda.
Yes.
Agenda item.
Agenda items.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. City Council comments?
Well, I have one coming quickly. Okay, I guarantee I want to go home, okay? I think it's almost 9 o'clock. Thank, okay, thank you so much, okay? Okay, finally, we can go home before 9 o'clock. But quickly, I just want to, okay, thanks to our public work and our community service for Saturday, and we show up like 8:30, and then we see a pack of people, and, okay, this pack of car in the parking lot of our, okay, spore plaque, and, okay, formerly known as a, okay, Big League Dream, but we see a lot of happy children and a lot of happy players, and I want to commend our mayor through a strike. Okay, I cannot believe it. I think you've been.
I couldn't believe it, too.
Okay, and I have a video I posted already. So, again, I want to thank the staff, community service staff, but we still have a room to improve, like a bathroom, like the, okay, drink, okay, on the field, since we still don't have that. But again, Rome doesn't build in one day, and we still need to continue to improve, and hopefully, we can make everybody happy. But again, I want to thank all the staff and to make this happen. Okay, thank you.
And I'll add on to that. I hope everyone had a happy Labor Day. When we were leaving the sportsplex, I want to commend our PD, I saw enforcement action in action on Azusa Avenue. Guy sped past me, and a speed trap caught him, and that happened to be where we had the unfortunate incident a couple of Sundays ago. So good job to our PD, good job to our maintenance workers at the sportsplex, and please keep it up. Thank you, guys.
Is the chief still here? Okay, I think he wants to talk about how we catch the hit and run.
For those that don't know, we had a hit and run, and it was a 13-year-old girl who got hit and was killed, passed away. It was a tragedy. Parents is, I know, Councilman Wu went to the family's home and spoke to the parents, and they were devastated. Took a few days, but they were finally able to see their daughter at the coroner's office, but we'll go ahead and have the chief speak on that.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and residents. I won't get into all the specifics because it's still an ongoing investigation, even though some charges have been filed. I think most of you know that this was involving two juveniles, where one was actually deceased. I just want to make a comment that we've had LPRs. LPRs are the license plate readers since 2016. We just had them on vehicles rather than stationary spots. And earlier this year, council approved that flock cameras where we've got them in locations around the city, and we really think that those are going to be beneficial to investigations, and it's already paid off, and I'll get into that. So since we've had them, which we start at the week of August 16th, it's been about 17 days, we've had several, several hits. We're not able to respond to every hit because sometimes we're tied up, but the 10 that we did respond to in 17 days, we've gotten 10 arrests. Actually, we've gotten 10 stops with 15 arrests. And more importantly, with the hit and run that occurred on the 29th, we were able to look at the flock cameras and actually identify the vehicle, which actually helped lead to the arrest of the subject that was there. And what was most important about that is that that all happened in the course of a couple hours. So it was. extremely fast. My guys knew exactly where to go. There were some other investigative things that actually helped bring that about as well, but the cameras definitely aided in that. And that was the purpose of asking for them, and they're definitely doing their job. So they're paying off already. And so I hope that after the two years is up, we continue.
Thank you so much. I agree. Flock camera is, you know, and that's what we pushed for, and we're happy to see this. And I know we had, as we mentioned prior, you know, the justice for Gabby, but this could have been another one where we won't be able to find a suspect. But I'm glad that everything turned out, and our hearts go to the families. Councilman Wu?
So I think we want to kind of thank Gabby's mom for his, her reluctantly tried to push for this, okay, what we can do to protect and serve our community. And we have this camera, so kind of a little bit, kind of late for her daughter, but hopefully she understands we really take this security really, okay, in the heart, want to really, okay, and have this justice. Okay, but is that part where you can share with us? So after we install this camera, how many stolen car, how many crime we stop?
Yeah, well, the numbers are here. We've gotten several hits. And so this is how it works. The cameras are located around the city, and the dispatch will get a hit, and it'll say, this vehicle is stolen in this area. It doesn't mean that we can get an officer there right away. It doesn't even mean that we can put it out. So I don't have the actual number of how many times that occurred, but what I have is the actual numbers where the dispatch said, hey, we have a license plate hit in this area, and the officer picked up and said, I'm responding, and we actually captured the vehicle. And in that instance, in 17 days, there's been 10 incidents, and every one of those incidents resulted in an arrest. Some of the vehicles that were stopped, there were multiple arrests. And it wasn't just the license plate that we got. There was other crimes associated with it. I don't have all those details. But I think it's paying off pretty good in 17 days, 10 stops, 15 people went to jail, 10 stolen vehicles off the street. Because, you know, there's victims, obviously, of those stolen vehicles, and then we don't know how many other crimes that they're committing with these. So I'm going to keep a running tab. What I'd like to do is come back maybe on a monthly basis, or until you tell me not to, and just kind of tell you what we're doing with our stats and where we are. But they're definitely paying huge dividends right now.
So I saw your Facebook, I saw your, okay, website, tried to promote, okay, a lot of information, including, okay, West Covina Police Weekly Report. I think this is good information for our residents to see what kind of achievement, what kind of protection we have, because I would want to show people a current, under your leadership, totally different than previously, because right now, it's customer service, protection, and make sure the taxpayer paying all this service, okay, the money, okay, go to the right place, okay, and they will be protected. At the same time, we will send this information to the criminal that don't come to West Covina because we're going to catch you, okay? We want to make sure we have that kind of sense of security, and that's why we spend all the top dollars on the police and fire.
And I agree. Our residents do have a thirst for information. They want to know what's going on. You know, our team got together right away. We revamped that website, and it's going out on social media. We put it out every Monday. When you read, the city manager actually put this up, but when you read the caption, if you see LPR in there, that was a hit. Anytime you read one of those captions, and it says, we have an LPR hit that came from the camera system, and you can kind of keep track of it that way. But our guys are doing a great job with it.
Thank you. Tell them, great job.
Thank you so much, chief. Okay, great job.
Anybody else? Somebody made it. I thought you were going to continue on, and I was like, oh, you're going to pass the nine. All right. Other than that, we hope you enjoy the evening. Actually, overall, it was a good day earlier, and it ended well, so on other aspects. So thank you again, everybody. Thank council, the staff, everybody out there watching, and have a good evening. Nice. Adjourned.